Okay, so we'll open the meeting. You ready Josh?
Yes. Recording started.
I don't, I don't see Brian. Brian, can you say something?
I see you Carl.
Oh, good. It's a one-way street.
Right.
All right, um. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Hold on, I'll get the flag Carl.
Oh, oh, they got the flag.
Are we ready? Ah, beautiful. I pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the Republic. One nation, under God. Liberty, justice, for all. We'll open the meeting with a moment of silence and while we do, we'll, we'll remember the, the mother of Lisa Green, Joyce Lucia, passed away only a few days after our last meeting on April 10. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. Like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants?
Uh, motion. Dan.
That's Dan, who seconded it?
Brian.
Brian, okay. Uh, any questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Dan, Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll, and I'll say yes. An acceptance, uh, a motion to accept the correspondence in the Reed file?
Dan motions.
Brian second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Now approval of the meeting minutes on open, of open session of March 24th, is there a motion?
So moved by Dan.
Second Brian.
Second by Brian. Any questions? Okay, uh, Justin?
Uh, yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Town administrator support Frank, update on COVID-19.
Hey, the, uh, we have continued uh, function with very few interruptions. We, we've had, um, at this point, two employees who've been quarantined, but no one who has come back active. Um, I do understand that we had a jump in infections or detections today. I think Tim said there were 73 in Whitman as of today. So, I don't know where that big jump came from, but, uh, hopefully, it's not a sign of any future uh, budget. We could be okay, but, um, there's a likelihood that by the end of this fiscal year, we'll be expensing some COVID costs, but nothing outrageous at this point.
Have, have there been any deaths Frank? There were not, there were, none were announced last Wednesday?
None that I know of, but Dawn gets the death certificates and I think she may have seen one that was COVID-related.
Yeah, we had one, um, it was a 69-year-old woman. She lived with her daughter. I don't know as if she actually lived in the community. She died at St. Joseph's Nursing Home and she had been there for, um, heart conditions, um, preceding her dying from COVID. But she listed Whitman as her residence. That's the only one I've seen. But I've seen a lot of deaths, which is bizarre. Heart attacks, um, McKinnons, they're keeping the, um, the crematory open late, but none of them are COVID-related. There's just a lot of deaths though. I don't know if it's caused stress, which is causing other things, but.
Okay, thank, thank, thank you Dawn. So it's jumped from 52 to 70-something in a, in a week then, you think Frank?
Yes, and, and it may well be that those were, uh, deaths that were tabulated, but not reported to us.
Okay, well, we get the, uh, board comes out every Wednesday if I, if I'm correct, so we'll see an update tomorrow.
Right.
On the state. Uh, anything else on, uh, COVID-19?
No, not at this point.
Except that there'll be no school for the rest of the year.
No, everybody heard that announcement today.
Yeah.
Carl, I have a question.
Rise by it.
This is Brian. Um, while, uh, you, you just brought that up about the, uh, uh, cancelling of school for the remainder of this year, um, I had a discussion, uh, with Fred Smalley called me this afternoon concerning, maybe there's something that the town and the school uh, region can do, uh, once we've cleared by all of this. Something for the seniors, um, in the town, uh, you know, something, uh, some kind of a ceremony or something because they've missed so much. It'd be nice if the town could come through with something to, uh, kind of, uh, lift spirits after this, uh, kind of ruin their senior year.
Okay, you were talking about the seniors in high school. You weren't talking about people like, people like Dan, okay?
No, not, 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 not 70-somethings, no.
Okay, that's, that, that sounds like a good idea. Um, anything else Frank on COVID?
No.
Uh, question of extending bill due dates, Frank?
Yeah, under chapter 53, the board has a couple of options. One of them is to simply extend the due date for bills to, uh, some date in the future up till June 1st. And if we were to do that, the, um, due, the bill date would be June 1st, the due date would be by June 29th. And, uh, any fees due from March 11th forward uh, could be waived. There's a second option, which I think is more suitable for us. And that is to simply adopt a, uh, option to waive fees and charges. I had a discussion with, uh, Mary Beth today. I also spoke with town council because there was a question as to, because of the wording, whether or not the town could, uh, would have the authority to waive late sewer and water bills. It is the opinion of council that the, uh, guide that the Department of Revenue put out does allow us to do that. The town may, if we adopt that provision, waive fees and charges um, for any bills issued after March 10th that are paid before June 30th. If bills are paid on or after June 30th, then charges apply to the original due date of the bills. Do I have that right, Mary Beth?
You do, except, um, it would be on bills that have, uh, been issued, I'm sorry, that were due on March 10th or after, not issued, but due on March 10th or after.
Good, right.
That would move interest out, um, up to June 30th, they could pay, and that interest would be waived from the original due date. And like you said, it paid on 30th or after, it reverts back to the original due date. That's correct.
So, at this point, it is my understanding that, uh, Mary Beth would recommend and I would concur with a vote to authorize uh, the waiving of interest or other penalties for late payments for bills due on and after March 10th up till June 29th, but to retain our original due dates.
So that would be section 11 that we would be adopting?
Correct.
I agree.
Okay, so what time I'd like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, Dan. So I'll watch you for discussion.
Second?
Oh, second, Brian second.
Okay, discussion.
All right, uh, Mary Beth?
Yes.
The sewer and water bill just went out this week, right? I mean, I just got mine.
Correct.
They're not due for what, another month?
So they had an issued date of April 15th and a due date of June 1st. So it's the current water sewer bill that, um, you know, would come into play here. If somebody had a prior bill on this bill that went out April 15th and it showed as a arrears, the interest wouldn't apply to the October 15th bill that's on the arrears, but the current portion issued April 15th due June 1st. People, residents would have until June 29th, end of the day, to pay that without interest on the current.
Okay, so we, for the water and sewer, the ones that we just handed out, we're actually extending it by 28 days?
Correct.
About, under a month.
Not the due date, not the due date, but that we would waive interest. The due date will remain the same, June 1st. And we will waive interest on any payments received from June 1st through the end of the day on June 29th. So basically, it's accomplishing the same thing.
Right, okay. All right. Sounds good.
Hey, anyone else? Okay, hearing no further discussion, uh, we'll, we'll call the roll on that, Dan?
Yes.
Uh, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next item on the agenda is the FY 21 capital spending, Frank?
Yes, um, as you know, we've have a number of capital requests that are pending right now. The capital committee is meeting on Thursday to further review those requests and to make recommendations. What we have available for capital spending is free cash and, uh, essentially money that's reserved for appropriation, uh, for this year. The uh, concern is that 850,000 of that is one payment to the middle school project. I know we've talked about this before, but I'm concerned, while I understand that we need to move forward. And I did talk to representatives from MSBA and they were, uh, pretty, uh, confident that they weren't going to be making any planned spending for next year. However, I did forward an article that, uh, was published a couple of days ago to the board in which there are indications that there may be some question about moving forward on some of these projects because of the impact of COVID on the sales tax revenue. Uh, we are mov-, unless the board feels otherwise, we're moving forward, uh, with the, uh, expectation that we're going to be presenting an article to use free cash to pay 850,000 for a feasibility study at our meeting whenever we meet. But I wanted to just put that on the table because we are facing significant reductions in revenue this year. So forwarded you a, and revenue analysis, a comparison, uh, with notations as to what's been reduced. And those reductions are based on full year receipts in 2019. But the comparison is where, uh, we collected, um, excise bills in dollars and we actually booked that revenue in 2019. We don't know if we're going to book that in 2020. And we don't know how severely we're going to be impacted in 2021. So, there, you know, there's a lot of concern out there. Um, and there should be. Because where, where we originally had projected to have 4.5 million in local receipt, we're now projecting 3,872,000. So there's a lot to consider. Uh, we'll be going through those numbers again this week. And I believe, is it next week we're meeting with the finance committee?
I think the week after Frank.
Week after.
Oh, me. I thought you meant the building committee meeting.
Yeah, the week, the building committee meeting is actually on the, uh, 30th. It's, uh, last third day of the month.
Finance committee meeting, we meet with the finance committee the 5th, the first week of May.
Yeah.
On the 5th?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll, we will have another opportunity to look at this, but I just want everyone to be aware of how much has changed in just over a month.
Thank you Frank. Does anyone have any comments or questions of Frank?
Yeah, if I could just, um, chime in really quick. So the, the capital committee, uh, Dan and I both sit on it. We've been considering this project for a, a while. The 850,000 toward a middle school feasibility study kind of, uh, gets us on track for about $30 million, ballpark $30 million in MSBA aid toward building a new middle school. So this is not a queue we want to get out of unless they give us a way out. So if get into a crunch, um, it's not really the capital committee's purview to weigh in where the money comes from, but the need is still there for the 850,000 this year. So if, if this board wants to look at potentially a bond, um, while rates are very low, to ease up some of the free cash this year, that might be worth considering.
Thank you Justin. Anybody else? It's an interesting suggestion. Uh, Frank, town meeting warrant?
Again, uh, it's under construction. The revenue sources that we project to use were updated. Um, I keep knocking my screen off here. Um, so what you have today is pretty much a complete warrant. But, um, there are still some issues that have to be reviewed and it's likely that's some of those articles may not make it to the town meeting post. Um, when we post that, it's going to be determined by when it decides we ultimately want to meet.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, bond payment for street lighting.
Excuse me Carl, so you just want to save all the budget talk for the, uh, the 5th with the joint meeting? I think that's a better way to do it. Cause I do have some questions, but they can wait.
Yeah, that, that might make sense because we're going to, that's going to be a, uh, as they say, say these days, a granular meeting. So, um, that makes sense to me. The rest, the rest of you all right?
Yep.
I agree.
Well, of course, anything anybody, um, wants more information on, I'll be happy to collect that and provide it.
All right. Okay, bond payment for street lighting then.
Okay, when we put this on the agenda, the concern that we have a payment due by and Beth felt that we may have had to, um, deficit spend in order to meet that bond payment. We did look at it and we came up with another alternative. That is, we have 50 some odd thousand dollars currently in the grant account for streetlights. So what I've asked Mary Beth to do is to get a, uh, quote, bond, the balance after we make that 51,000 dollar payment. And that will still hopefully appear on our ultimate, uh, town meeting warrant in order to permit us to make that payment uh, in the beginning of fiscal 21. But as it stands now, we're no longer in a position of not have, not being able to make that payment. This issue goes away.
Okay, thank you. Any, anybody have any questions or comments?
Frank?
Yep.
I do, uh, so I, as, as we spoke, there's about 55,164,19 available that we plan to pay for the payment that is due on May 20th of 2020. And I believe we'll pay that and then we'll bond the difference. I'll start that process on May 1st to go for a bond. The, right now, the rates look like they might come in about one and a half percent. And then we can maybe put an article on the meeting, uh, for this year to pay the bond payment that will come due next year.
Right.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you Mary Beth.
Thank you.
So Frank, where do we actually, do we sit with this? So this 1339 that was on the, um, on the warrant, is that to pay this project off or?
Yes.
Okay.
That's to fully, that's to fully retire the project. Now what's included in there is the issue we have with National Grid because we still have to address that. And that is, we're seeking redress from National Grid for the condition of the wiring on the lights they turned over to us. But, um, that's going to take some time. And it's not something that we're going to make any progress on while we've got the operations we currently have in front of us. But they're aware of our issue. And they of course have stated that we bought the lights as is, but I'm, I'm willing to go further down the road with that argument.
Okay, Randy?
Also, thank you.
Uh, and we, we're going to put up, talking about the budget review until the next meeting if I understand what's going on. Uh, new business considered date for annual town election. Frank?
Hey, I met with Dawn earlier today and we've done nothing but talk about elections the last week or two. And it looks like no matter what we do, we have to hold an election this year. I believe the target date is June 27th.
Excuse me, I think that you, the target date was just swallowed. Did you say June 27th?
Yes.
We have to have it before June 5th and June 27th is the last Saturday.
Last Saturday. Okay, do we need a, would we need a motion then to, uh, set that date?
What about changing the time, the hours? Would that be a separate motion or?
I think we could do it all, we could do it all in the same motion probably.
Cause I'd like to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
About that. Dawn, Dawn's concern is, uh, bringing people into town hall to vote.
Sure.
And my election workers, I'm concerned with them. I mean, the whole, the whole thing we've been working on is exposure and less exposure is better.
Well, that would fall into bringing people into town hall to vote.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the concern is, is limit exposure. Dawn had suggested four hours. Um, and I don't know if we specifically talked about what hours they would be. Um, I had suggested maybe six hours to give people more time, but do we really want to do that? Where the option to vote by mail is being urged everywhere in the state. So, you know, my initial reaction, uh, of saying giving more time doesn't make a lot of sense if our motivation is to reduce the number of people coming out. Uh, Dawn has been advised today, I think that, uh, the state is going to provide funding to mail a vote by mail application to every registered voter.
No, that's for the state, for the, they're going to mail the ballots and everything.
Oh, okay. But that's, that's now for this election then?
No, but I've looked into different things for this and I found out, um, I wanted to put it in the express and it would be $200 to put um, an application in the express with some type of, um, description on the back of what it was for. I talked to them today. I've talked to Greno, um, about different protective things for my election workers. I've, um, purchased some hand sanitizer, things like that from Walmart and Avon. Um, the man there was wonderful. He helped me out with some stuff when we couldn't get it. And I've also talked to Chief Hanlon and one of the things that my concern was, was the six foot. I mean, we would do, I've talked to Todd too. We've, I've really talked, I think, I think about this constantly. I don't, I mean, if somebody were to get sick because of an election and because of me, it would be a terrible thing to live with. And I want to do everything that I can to protect the voters and to protect the people that work. If there was not another option as far as this early voting, um, by mail, then I wouldn't go for it obviously. But there is another option and it's, you know, it's a huge option and I think a lot of people, I've already received applications. So, and then I went back and I looked at statistics of how many people actually show up to vote. Um, Tim Hanlon's concern was, um, you know, the congestion, you know, if it's a shorter time, people are going to flock to the town hall. But if you do like what Walmart does and market basket and you mark the six foot, I asked chief to have an extra police officer. You know, me and Todd talked about marking six foot, you know, what next in the, I have this protecting my poll workers with setting up with six feet away, different things like that, because we do have to have the election. Um, but I, I think most people are going to do the early voting by mail. I just don't have the date and I didn't have the time, so I couldn't really, I haven't really advertised it, but I want to advertise the heck out of it and you know, see if, you know, some of the candidates themselves or the town website. I've put it out there at the town website. The state has done it for the, um, state elections, but it's still, you know, they're, they're saying stuff that about the municipal elections too, and it don't matter what town. So I, really quick, I went through when I did the last 10 elect town elections and I totaled them up. The numbers fluctuate because we could have had a two and a half override or things like that. But in the last 10 years, we've only had 9,301 voters that voted in 10 years. We only have 10,000 born and picked three voters. So as far as the voter count for an annual, it, it's, it's low to begin with, even if your polls are open. So I think that if you just limited it to four hours, I don't think we're going to get a swarm. If it was a presidential, then I would be really concerned. But I think with it being an annual, you know, you get seven or 800 people and I bet you most of them. And I could, in, in, you know, I just, I think four hours is okay. And even if you don't do four hours, maybe consider six, go into a six hour. Um, the minimum is four hours. The state has actually encouraged towns to do the four hours. And I also did a poll, Frank, said, you know, that, that might be brought up as to other towns are doing it. And I, um, I sent out an email. I got 27 responses. Out of those, um, 13 people were actually voting on it tonight, 13 communities. And they're not neighboring communities. I'll be honest with you. They're, it's been all over. Um, nine communities have already reduced their hours. Two, um, have stayed the same and three can't change because if it's in bylaws that they have to be, um, you know, open a certain time, they would have to change their bylaws, which that's a whole different blogging. But you guys have the control of setting the polling hours. So I'm just asking, you know, in my expertise, I'd, I'd like to see it go to four hours. I don't think we have enough interest in, um, I don't have a political gain in this, so that, that's just my opinion with everything going on. I'd like to protect the voters and I'd like to protect my staff and if not four, maybe even consider six.
Anyone have any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, if I can jump in. I, I don't like the, my first instinct is not to restrict the hours of voting as our, our impulse, um, without at least exploring some other options. If we can have a couple of shifts of, of election workers or set up, um, high-risk candidate times first. Uh, I, I like, I like moving the date to, to set it, but I don't know that I'm ready to vote on restricting hours.
So people have asked about, about, um, having like seniors vote at certain hours and having elections outside. I mean, we've really, Justin, we've all thought of a lot of different things. You can't do any of that. You can't vote outside. You can't restrict, you can't restrict. If somebody comes in, say you require face masks. If it's not in order, you can't say, you can't come in because you don't have a face mask. Like you can't put, you, you, you just, you can't, can't do any of that. So that's why there's, the only way to protect is the thing that, that, you know, what I'm suggesting.
Dawn, I believe that we, the board of selectmen has the authority to issue an order um, that face masks be worn.
To provide them though, if, I mean, right, I mean, how do you, what if somebody doesn't have a face mask, you tell them they can't vote. I bet you that won't over.
It's the same problem, restricting voting for.
Yeah, you can't, you can't do that unless you provided.
Restriction would be for citizens entering the town building. It would be necessary that they wear a face mask for protection of others. Um, and I know communities all around us are doing it.
Didn't the government?
Didn't the governor mandate if you're in public, you have to wear a face mask?
Yes.
Well, that should solve the problem.
Believe it was a recommendation, not a mandate.
It wasn't a mandate, it was, it was a strong recommendation, just like the other one.
Well, what if we, on average, on average, there's a thousand voters coming in. We had the, not the N95s, but the typical cotton ones. We get a thousand of them and went to everybody as they come in the room at the door.
Well, I don't know that they're even.
That should solve. I've seen them on Amazon today.
I would guess that would be a very expensive proposition.
Or, or how about even something that we divided it up by precinct, that we gave each precinct a time to, to come in.
Yeah, do that.
My understanding, you can't place any limitations on voters entering the polling place to vote during the hours that they're permitted to vote. So that's, that's what kind of makes.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out a way, because I mean, I guess having followed these a little bit for a while. It seems like that, that big morning rush and then you had that rushes, it's, you know, later in the evening. Some way to kind of spread that out a little bit. Something we can do to, to spread it out, but.
You just do the six foot, you mark the six foot, it's like going to Dunkin' Donuts or anything, you're gonna have to do it anyways. That's why I asked to have an extra police officer, because irregardless of whether you do eight hours or four hours, you still, like you said, Randy, you're gonna still have, maybe, maybe you're gonna have the people in the morning. I mean, I thought about having a drive up. You know, I've contacted the post office to see if they have, you know, an extra post office box. I found a company that has a slot like that over in Brockton, you could put it in. And it was like $2,000, it was like ridiculously priced. So you can't, you can't have a drive, you cannot have a drive up, you can't have it outside. Clerks have like, you know, come up and tried a whole bunch of different ways, so.
Well, if, if we can use a drop box, I think we make whatever investment is necessary to make that option available for people. You know, $2,000 is a lot of money. But when you're talking about the ability to serve the public and allow them to participate in the election process, I don't think it's a lot of money. If that's what it takes to do that and to do it safely, then I think that's worth the investment.
I have a question, Dawn, excuse me, did I understand you, Dawn, to say that the drop boxes aren't allowed? Is that what you said?
No, like drive up, like we wanna, you know, do like a drive up.
Got it. Thank you.
Carl, to the, to the board, Dawn, regular, regular voting hours are what now?
Nine to five.
Nine to five.
Yes.
Right, so that, if we were to go to 10 to four, that's a six hour. I mean, that's only cutting an hour in the front and an hour in the back. I mean, it's almost the whole day for people to vote. And if you have a lot of people who mail in their votes, that means you're not gonna have a lot of people gathering at the one time. And we could have somebody on the outside of the building allowing X amount of people in. And if we get the voting.
I don't think. Well, I don't think, I don't think you'll see lines outside of the building. And as far as getting workers, Justin, you know, you had said, maybe you could do shifts and stuff. I'm gonna have a heck of a time getting, all my poll workers are 75, 80 years old. You, you know, I mean, I'm gonna be like, and, and you have to be trained. You can't just pull, pull somebody off the street and say, the law, the state law says they have to be trained. So it has to have training sessions.
I think right now, you, you need to be asking them right now.
Well, I didn't have a date and I didn't have, I don't have, I needed, that's why I think tonight.
Yeah, it doesn't make any difference the date, I mean, it's a Saturday and.
Sure it does.
It's gonna be available.
How many people are not available on a Saturday in June in the situation we're in? It's whether or not they want to get out of the house. And. Right. Why not do, why not do like 10 to four? You know, that way you cut an hour in the front and an hour in the back. And it's basically almost the same thing, Justin's worried about if we're cutting the hours down. Yeah, by, you know, it used to be at one time, what, like eight to nine, eight to seven or something like that at one time?
Then you follow the state probably seven to eight, yeah.
Yeah, in the old days, I mean. Yeah.
Excuse me, Justin, what concerns you about restricting the hours to four?
I, I just don't like the idea of limiting any opportunities to vote. I know that we're adding early voting and, and some other options this year, but it's, it feels odd to restrict the hours that you can go to town hall. But if, Dawn, if you've got.
I had a.
Forward that along?
Yeah, I had a different reaction to that. My, my reaction was if you're, if you're trying to avoid people crowding into a place, the more you restrict the hours, the more you increase the opportunities for lots of people to show up.
That's true, that's true.
Now, if Dawn, if Dawn thinks that the, the markers of six feet and people wearing masks will take care of that, that's good. Then I, I could probably see some sense to limiting it to four. But otherwise, it just seems counterintuitive that if you reduce the number of hours, you're gonna increase the number of people that are gonna be there at any one time.
So we don't really need to post the warrant until seven, seven days before. So tonight, you, you actually really don't have to vote for the hours. And it's something I can actually watch to see how many EV, early voting applications I get. So if I get like 300 of them, then you know, you know what I'm saying? I can watch to see what I'm getting by mail, the response. Once I get it out there, the date, and I can start advertising, I do a few other things, I will see how many early voting ballots I have. And maybe we could then, you could vote later on as far as setting the hours, we just won't post the warrant. You can vote to have the election on June 27th, but you can set the hours at a later date, at a later meeting. And then post the.
Yeah. That way you have time to talk to your employees. Because you have a date.
Right, you're right, to see, yeah, to see who will work and. So, so the state said that I have to have like two check in, two check out. But, but they're starting to be a little bit more fluctuating with that as far as how many poll workers. And really, who's gonna put me in jail? I don't know, I shouldn't say that, but if, if, if I happen to have one check in because I couldn't get enough people, or one check out. I don't think it's gonna be a crime. I think, you know, I think the state would understand the circumstances if I can't get workers. They said to ask teachers, hey, maybe, you know, I don't know. People that are unemployed might want to work and I don't know.
I'm not in the about this year, Dawn, if you need help, let me know.
Yeah, I might be looking, you know?
Yeah, we have five selectmen.
There you go.
Only, only three can do it though.
I know two that can't do it, they can't be in the town hall.
Yeah, that's right. I can't, I can't.
Do we have a motion on the floor yet on the day?
Okay.
Carl, I, can I just weigh in a second? This is Brian. I, I, I have to agree with what Justin's saying. And anytime you want to restrict voting, it, it's a perception more than it is reality, I think. Because of every election that we've had with the last 18 or 20 years, I've been on the sidewalk holding signs for somebody and you tend to see trends. And, and Randy's right, you get the rush in the morning and then the rush at the end. But any, anytime you, the perception of you're restricting somebody's voting rights, even if it's under these circumstances, it's a bad view. I think the perception would be bad for us. I think that we could do an enormous amount of protection for the workers. And if they, the older folks don't want to do it, then we, we should work really hard to try to get some younger folks that would volunteer for this, that they're gonna be paid, obviously. But I, I think that Justin's right on with this perception of restricting voter rights.
I would agree, but I, I think with the early voting, I don't know, there's, there's, you know, there's a, there's a scale here. What, what do you? My job is to protect my people and the vote, that's how I'm looking at it. That's what we're being told inside of town hall, watch this, do this. And, you know, I'm just concerned with their safety.
Right, I, and I agree with you. I think we all care about our, our people more than probably we show on occasion. But I, I think ultimately, everybody on this call has, has been charged with, with protecting the citizens physically and protecting their rights according to the constitution of town bylaws. And, you know, I think that we, we should make all precautions and protections for our workers. But I, ultimately it comes down to we're here to serve the public. And I think that that's where we need to set the priority. Now, do we limit a, a little bit of the hours? I think it's probably a good idea. I just don't know how much, but I, I do tend to agree with Justin on the perception of this all is probably not in our best interest.
What about the sick goes somewhere in the middle, six hours instead of we normally do eight? What you feeling about?
I, I'd be in favor of five or six, I think. Because I think with the early voting and the absentee voting, and if everybody well in advance knows that they were limiting the hours for the protection of the workers and the citizens, I think they'll understand.
Yeah, we'd really need to push the early voting, which we will, I mean, we'll really push up the early voting by mail, the, and, and we're doing this for safety. I just, Dawn, if you've got guidance from the state that you could forward out to us to review and come back to this, I'd just be a little more comfortable seeing.
Right.
Their directive.
It's probably evolving as we go too. Every day there's probably something new and different, who knows what they'll do in two weeks.
Frank, did you want to China?
Yeah. Can I suggest that we go ahead and set a date? Dawn to collect some information, which she's in the process of doing. We can look at guidance that's coming from the Division of Elections. And we'll, we can look at what the other communities around us are doing. We certainly don't want to disenfranchise anyone who wishes to vote. But we also have to be practical. I mean, I, I see the pictures of crowds walking in parks and. I mean, things that just don't make any sense. And it's, if there's one thing that's been evident in this crisis, it's that not everybody out there exercises common sense. So we have to, may have to set limits, but let's set the date and revisit this at our next meeting.
Is there a motion then to set the date for June 27?
Uh, Dan will make that motion.
Yep. Second for Brian.
Do we have to talk about the date any longer?
No.
Okay, we'll have a vote, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, so it'll be June 27. Do you think, we have another meeting on May 5th. Do you think that's enough time for Dawn to get enough information for us to be able to decide the length of hours?
Mid-May and still be, still have enough time.
Yeah.
All right.
Every, it changes every day, Carl, I get something every day that's different, so.
We have, we have, look at it, on May 5th or on May 19th, it still gives us enough time to.
Yeah, sure, it does, you're right, that's, yeah, okay. Okay, we're done with that. The regional agreement? The regional assessment agreement committee, Frank?
Well, apparently, I escaped the committee as an advisory member, but they corrected that.
Oh, you have, do you have a vote now?
Yes.
You get to vote?
We are, I, I would say that our last meeting was not productive. We do have people from Mars, the group, not the planet, coming to the next meeting to talk about provisions in the agreement. We really didn't get very far because it's the, that we're unprepared to throw out a number and Hanson's unprepared to offer a solution to the piece of the agreement that addresses funding. So we'll have to see what the next meeting brings us.
Do we have a date for the next meeting? Date for the next meeting?
Yes.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And is it, do you know if somebody from Mars will be there or?
Yes.
Will it be, there'll be somebody physically there?
No, it will all be electronic.
No, I, I meant that.
Yeah.
It won't, it won't be our reading responses for, to, to questions by some, by one of us.
Yes. So.
Yes, what?
Yes, they will be there and available to answer questions.
Okay. So. And I, I saw, I saw Rick Anderson's questions that he, that he sent in, but I have seen no others.
I sent a couple of questions. I sent in a few questions at a time, I didn't CC the entire board on it. But if, if members of the board have questions for the Mass Association of Regional Schools, feel free, near Frank and we'll forward it along to the superintendent.
Before tomorrow?
Yeah, before four o'clock tomorrow.
I already expressed my concerns in an email to Justin.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Do you want to add to Frank's report on that, Justin?
Uh, no, I think he characterized it correctly. We, we set a couple of competing objectives and we'll, we'll move forward from there.
Okay, anyone have anything they want to say? Yes, Randy?
I, I did listen to that meeting, Carl, and I was, myself and Justin and Frank sat in the first meeting we have with Mars. And one of the points that was not clarified was the breakdown of local aid. For whatever reason, one of the Hanson members brought that up and still seemed to contest that local aid was, was one check and, and one lump sum. The last time Mars was out and sat with us, they actually provided a breakdown of local aid, which is very close to what we've already seen as a board. So I think that's important too for that next meeting. And I think I did send it back again to you, Justin, because it was a hard copy, it wasn't a digital copy. I think Frank, you probably have that. But I think that's something that, that needs to get out there that we're not hearing is that, that our town is receiving, I, I think it's close to 6 million, Justin?
Uh, we're receiving 4.6 in Holdhar, you mean aid?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's about 6 million.
But $6 million more in local. And, and that's really where the crux of this comes down to. Also, a while back, I had sent an email to Christine Lynch from DSE regarding some, clarifying some assessment issues when I was slightly more involved in this. And I did get a response today from Ms. Lynch. And not to go through the whole, but one of the key points I brought, I picked up is, she does say in this email that unfortunately, most regional school districts will be going to a 112 budget this year because of COVID. And that DSE will be issuing guidelines very shortly that will help districts as well as member towns navigate through this process. So you'll probably hear this again tomorrow if a DSE representative should be there, but there's awful, obviously a lot of issues going on at Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that's, that they're trying to deal with as well.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. Anyone else?
I would just like to, to add on to Randy's point, that the, yeah, like you said, 1/12 is looking like a realistic possibility for a number of reasons this year. And this board just needs to be prepared for what that may look like as we get more information going forward.
Right, right.
I have a question, Carl, if, if we're going to the 112 budget and you can't pay less than you paid the year before, and we're in a statutory situation. So we would be paying the same, Hanson would, based on those numbers and the requirement of statutory, they would have to pay a lot more than they did last year. That's the question I'd like to see asked tomorrow.
A good question, Randy?
That actually was the question that, that I sent to Christine Lynch.
Oh, good.
That, that same regarding our assessment. That, that same regarding our assessment, would we drop or do, must we remain the payment we gave in the last fiscal year? And to be honest with you, I didn't get a direct answer. It, it seems to be very much in flux. And it said, I will, just a little excerpt of this and I'll, and I'll send it along to the board. It says, your assessment amount may increase from FY 20 to 21 depending on factors such as minimum local contribution. And more than likely, you would be, have to pay the amount you paid the previous year. So it could be, I, I wouldn't see us dropping. What I take out of it, although it's not a direct answer.
There is one question on that, that I don't think we're clear on, and that is we cannot reduce our, our maintenance of effort that the the portion of the budget that included Nade. I think that if I read the analysis correctly, and this is a while ago, the only portion that could drop would be assessment that's subject to the local towns after crediting the contract, minimum contributions from both town. So if, if we were just to go into a straight shift, it's possible that a million dollar shift would mean we go down a million and Hanson would go up. Because that's money outside of the.
Right, outside of the minimum local contribution.
Minimum local contribution. But we weren't looking to do that. We were simply asking them to pick up their share.
Right. As far as I know, the, the only way that your actual contribution can drop is if your minimum local contribution should drop, which, which is very rare.
Well, things aren't getting any easier. I was kind of concerned by what you were saying, Randy, because it sounds almost like that you're not getting a, a fully straight answer suggests that Hanson skates one more year.
No, 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 it, it doesn't say that. So if you were to take the, the statute, if we were to go a 112 budget based off FY 20 numbers.
Right.
Because of the assessment change, I think we would actually drop to somewhere around a 13.7, 13 million, sorry, that would be we were 14.4, 13.7. So which would be less than the 14.4 we gave last year, which by their guidelines would not be legal. So I just don't see us dropping below that, that we still may need to, at a bare minimum, depending on how the budgets that account for, at least a payment of what we made last year. During the 112.
But that, that was based upon a 60-40 split.
Right. What, what's actually would lower our payment now? If the budget doesn't go up is the, the change in assessment methodology that they actually pick up a portion. But by what I'm reading here is they, they would still need to pay their portion, but we still may, would probably have to pay ours to the full amount that we did last year based on FY 20 numbers. And Christine Lynch did, to be noted, that she forwarded my question in her answer, her response to Jeff. So Jeff has this and it's probably something that will also be addressed tomorrow at that meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you. Set the May meeting schedule, the 5th to the 19th?
Sounds good. We can always amend if we need to later on.
Okay, all business. Further extension to town meeting. Frank?
And I talked to Mike Sealy just to find out what his limits were. And he indicated that he would be okay with. 6th, I believe. We have tentatively moved the date forward to June 3rd, I think. We have the ability to revisit that at our next meeting in May. So at this point, I don't think there's any need for the board to act. We let the budget develop and then make a determination and see how the rest of this is going.
Okay, is everybody clear on that?
Yeah, I have a question, Frank. Does our town meeting have to be at least two weeks before the town election?
No. No, it's just the way the bylaw it out. There's, there, the town meeting and the town election are mutually exclusive. The town meeting has to be held with an advance notice of at least seven days. We'd certainly want to do more than that. But they're not tied together. In fact, I think there's one community that's having its town meeting after the election.
Yeah. Well, one of the articles of town meeting is to call for the election.
Yeah, that's also addressed in the bylaw. I think Dawn wants to comment on it.
Yeah, I need a voter registration for that. So it's more than 70, like you can't call a town meeting for seven days because I need 20 days for voter registration. The special election, I mean, the election, the, the legislation allowed for a 10-day voter registration, but for a town meeting, I need 20 days voter registration in advance. And you have to have voter registration. Not that I know of. They did change the voter registration for the election, but nothing for the town meeting.
So that would be like May 15th then, somewhere around 20 days of.
It, probably June, June 6th or 8th?
The 3rd.
It might make sense to schedule it for June 22nd and then make a change if we need to.
Is that the same day as Hanson's?
No.
No, Hanson's is June 15th.
June 15th, okay.
Yeah.
So you have the elections and the, and the town meeting and the election on the same week?
It, it could be. I mean, it, it's the pleasure of the.
Jeez, thanks.
Well, we wouldn't have to make any decision until our May 5th meeting, correct?
Correct. That still gives us time for voter registration.
Yeah.
Will we need the moderator to actually move the date again?
No, actually, that was a fait accompli. We're reviewing information with Town Council the next day. It was determined that until a date is scheduled and the warrant is published, it remains the purview of the Board of Selectmen to set the meeting date. So once it's published, then the moderator has to change it.
Okay.
You know, given, given what's going on with the virus, early June might still be optimistic.
Right.
Want to want that many people, or at least 100 people, to come into it, to come into town hall.
Yeah, you might not get them.
How many can we have on Zoom?
I can't even begin to imagine a town meeting on Zoom.
On what, on Zoom? Yeah, that would be. Well, we could set up Memorial Fields like a, like a drive-in movie theater and have people sitting in their cars with their little, with their little clickers.
I think some towns are actually exploring outdoor meeting possibilities.
Anyway, so we're going to be talking about this again on May 5th, I guess.
Okay.
But right now, we have a week, right now it's down for June 3rd, correct?
Right.
I think 3rd.
Yes.
Right, right. That's a Wednesday. We know that.
Right, right.
And Mike had mentioned that it would, it would be inconvenient for him to be there at that time. That's why he asked that we set it at a later date, but we have time to address that.
Can we check the moderator's availability on June 15th and June 22nd? See if one of those is better? Okay.
He's available all of June after June 6th.
When is Hanson's town meeting?
15th.
Just, I, I can't see a number of people getting into a, getting into a room safely in, in early June. I really can't. I'm, I, I think June 15th might even be optimistic.
Yep.
And look around you. Feasibility study for the Whitman Middle School?
As I mentioned earlier, my concern, given the cash flow is, is once again whether you want to use free cash for that. I think Justin's comment about looking at potentially bonding that study over perhaps three years would give us a little more flexibility in, in budgeting. It doesn't fit into our plan going forward. But the plan has to be reviewed and amended in any event. So I guess that's something else we need to study and come back to perhaps on the 5th.
Right. Right, and, and the interest rates are as low as they're going to be.
They're favorable. I have a question about that.
Is anything else you want to bond right now?
Really?
Is there a need for an executive session tonight, Frank?
No.
Okay. If that's the case, then a motion to adjourn will be in order.
All right, just by the, what was the dates again for the, the, our next meeting, the 5th and the what?
19th.
19th, okay. Motion to adjourn, Dan?
Second, Brian.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Thank you, Wallace. It was, uh, productive.
Thank you, flush, flush hands.
Good night.
Hey, Claire's going to be on the TV tonight on the news.